Good afternoon and welcome to City Council's Budget Continued Budget Hearings. We are reconvening this meeting. I'm Councilwoman O'Connor, I'll be hosting this afternoon. We have PWSA and Alkasan this afternoon, and we will start with our Budget Director to give us an overview of PWSA.
Sure, thank you, sir. Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, the mission and goals of PWSA have changed recently, that the representatives here can further explain. According to the recently-launched PGH2O-2030, the goals of the PWSA are: to responsibly and sustainably manage Pittsburgh's water system for the next 12 years, and well beyond 2030; to provide safe, reliable water 24/7/365 to our customers, and to provide them with excellent customer service; to renew and upgrade our drinking water, storm water, and sewer infrastructure to exceed all compliance standards; to prioritize public health and replace all lead service lines; to make water service accessible through customer assistance to our lower-income customers; and continue a moratorium on winter water shut-offs; to be accountable, accessible, and fully transparent to the customers; to fairly inequitably charge each customer based on their usage of the system; to be valued regional environmental steward of our precious resource, water. Councilwoman Gross is the representative for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority Board from City Council. The recently-approved cooperation agreement and MOU between PWSA and Domi has changed the structure of the relationship between the city and the authority. For the budgetary highlights, for the PWSA, how it affects our operating budget this year, the recently-approved cooperation agreement changed that structure, as I mentioned, and is reflecting the 2020 budget in a number of places. The revenue line item, we have had in there in the past, PWSA indirect costs for 2020, $6,741,000, and that's reflected in each year of the five-year plan. In 2018 prior, this was an uncalculated yearly payment of $7.1 million. Expenditures, the water line item has increased from $406,382 last year to $3,100,000 this year, and projected to rise to over $4.6 million by 2023. The sewer line item remains steady at $42,419. The Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority also has an impact on the city's pension, both revenue, state pension aid, and expenditures. PWSA employees receive a different pension benefit than the majority of municipal employees hired after 2005. The capital budget does not have any PWSA-related projects, only $70,000 is budgeted for flood control in the 2020 capital budget.
Thank you.
We have a lot of familiar faces here today.
Yes, we do. We're also joined by Councilwoman Harris. Councilwoman Gross apologizes as a board member, she obviously knows what's going on at PWSA, but just wanted to say that she could not be with us this afternoon, so I'll pass it off to PWSA for presentation. Jake, are you doing the presentation?
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. Jake Pollock, PWSA Government Affairs. Because Bill's overview did such a great job summarizing the bigger organizational introduction, I'll just jump into some of our 2019 accomplishments that we wanted to quickly highlight. First of all, our lead response plan, which is obviously in its third year, our efforts to remediate the effects of lead service lines throughout the city. Our lead response program falls into two primary categories. First is the lead line replacement program, which saw another very successful year in 2019. First of all, in 2018, just to briefly summarize, we replaced over 2,000 lead service lines, which is the equivalent of almost seven and a half miles of lead pipe. From January to May of 2019, we replaced over 700 public and 600 private lead service lines. For regulatory reasons, we calculate our replacements on a June-to-July cycle, which is, I'm sorry, a July-to-June cycle, which is why the numbers are broken up that way. We met our July 2019 to June 2020 lead line replacement requirement 10 months early, so in two months, we replaced the number of lead service lines we would be required to replace in a full calendar year, and we're on track to replace over 3,700 more lead lines before June of 2020. In addition to lead line replacements, this year PWSA also began adding orthophosphate to our water treatment protocol as a corrosion control measure to protect against lead contamination. Orthophosphate is a food-grade additive that reduces corrosion in plumbing. In a year-long study, we found it to be more effective at reducing lead levels than our previous treatment method, and we started using orthophosphate in spring of this year. And the January lead testing results, which are already underway, and which will be released early in the new year, will tell us how effective it's been, but our early indicators have all shown significant reduction in lead levels compared to other testing rounds, so we're optimistic that it is working. It's a process that improves with time, it takes a while for the orthophosphate to have its effect, so we won't know fully how effective it has been until January, but we're optimistic that it's having a meaningful impact. And the advantage of that is that it takes us, it will take us a while, our commitment is to have all of the lead service lines removed by 2026. This provides interim relief to folks whose lines have not yet been replaced, to still have their lead levels reduced through this treatment protocol. Another major project and undertaking for us in 2019 has been getting the Highland One Reservoir back in service. Highland One is the reservoir in Highland Park, in the middle of the park, the uncovered one, for those who don't know. A number of important projects have been underway there. First is the ultraviolet water treatment program. We installed ultraviolet lighting treatment to the microfiltration plant attached to Highland One in order to meet DEP requirements and improve the quality of our secondary treatment there. The installation of UV treatment is complete, we're now training the operators who will be running that part of the system. The final permit and activation are expected in early 2020. The facility will be staffed 24/7 by plant operators now, which will be another improvement to our ability to manage the system. And in connection to the improvements being made in the microfiltration plant, we're also making upgrades to the walkway wall and railing around the reservoir, including a full reconstruction of the wall rather than a repair as originally planned. We've also installed security cameras in accordance with the DEP order. So we expect that with the completion of all these projects, we'll be able to put Highland One back online next year. On water quality, we've continued to expand our water quality monitoring efforts. This includes an installation of new water quality monitors throughout the system, and that gives us deeper insights into system performance, and also allows us to take proactive steps to maintain high standards. We're also doing voluntary monitoring for unregulated contaminants to stay ahead of the curve on potential risks and future regulatory requirements. For example, we currently monitor per- and poly-flucal alkal substances, or commonly referred to as PFOS, and radionuclides, both of which are currently unregulated but which EPA notes may present a cancer risk. PWSA's testing has not shown any quantifiable levels of either PFOS or radionuclides in our drinking water system. On customer assistance, we've been taking strides to improve our customer assistance program and offer further relief to customers who are having trouble paying their water bill. In recognition of the impact of necessary rate increases, we continue to enhance and expand these programs to help meet the needs of low-income customers. Customers who are having trouble staying current on their utility bills should contact our Energy Fund at 866-762-2348, and all that information is also in the presentation. On affordability, beyond our customer assistance program, PWSA is engaged in initiatives to ensure that our service remains affordable and accessible to all Pittsburghers, that our rates fairly distribute the cost of providing quality service, and that we have a positive impact on the communities we serve. PWSA has a low-income advisory committee that brings together PWSA staff, community advocates, and subject matter experts to provide recommendations to the board and senior management on affordability issues. PWSA staff, community advocates, and experts, and other stakeholders are also working with the U.S. Water Alliance and a cohort of six other cities to develop a water equity roadmap for PWSA that will provide actionable recommendations to promote sustainability, affordability, public health, workforce development, and transparency and accountability through PWSA's operations and infrastructure investments. The roadmap is in the final stages of drafting and should be published in early 2020. Customer assistance is another area where we've seen notable strides in 2019. The average hold time from October 2018 to October 2019 for customers calling into our customer service line was 1 minute and 9 seconds, which is a significant improvement over previous performance. And the, what's called the call abandonment rate, which means folks who call in, are placed on hold, and eventually give up and hang up, went down significantly from 13% to only 2.6%. In December of last year, we launched a customer usage portal that will allow customers, as a free service, to track real-time usage of their water through their meter, and will provide them with text or email alerts to avoid costly water leaks on their property. They can set thresholds for average use to receive alerts immediately rather than waiting to receive their bill. And there's also a, the system also has functionality for folks who are going on vacation, or snowbirds who only live in their house part of the year, so that they can monitor usage differently depending on their travel schedule. This is also available to tenants in multi-unit buildings. And finally, our meter replacement program has been a real success in 2019. We've replaced over 8,000 meters from January through the end of October, and are on track to reach 10,000 replacements before the end of the year, well ahead of our compliance requirement. In addition to helping us meet regulatory requirements, meter replacement also improves billing accuracy and customer service. On community engagement, this has been a busy year for PWSA in our outreach to communities throughout the city and throughout our service area. We've held 34 community project meetings to brief residents about projects in their community and gather feedback in advance of some of our capital projects. We've attended a total of 48 community meetings throughout the city. We've handled 620 community service requests, and just to be clear, those are requests coming from either your offices or directly from community organizations that's separate from general customer service inquiries through the customer service line. And in early December, we'll be launching a new website that will streamline customer access to important information and make it easier to find project updates or report a service outage. On the administrative side of things, PWSA, as you all know, is now a PUC-regulated utility provider, and as a result, we are continuing to work through the process of compliance with PUC regulatory standards. We're making good progress in that effort. We're currently awaiting a final decision from the commission on our compliance plan, which we expect early in the new year. In general, we've received positive feedback from the PUC about our performance and improvements that have been made since coming under their jurisdiction. We're also working to reduce our reliance on outside consultants and contractors, and to bring more critical functions of the authority in-house. In the past year, numerous positions in engineering and construction management that had previously been filled by consultants are now handled by PWSA employees, following similar progress in 2018 in our finance department, as exemplified by the two folks sitting to my left, who are PWSA employees who manage our finance department, which had previously been largely consultant-run. And we're in the process of doing a comprehensive overhaul of our developer manual to clarify our requirements, improve our review processes, and update our standards. That was a quick summary of the sort of 2018 year in review, I'm sorry, 2019 year in review for the authority. I'm sure you'll have questions, but before we jump to that, I'm going to hand it over to Jen to go over the 2020 budget. You just push the button on the top.
Thank you very much. My name is Jennifer Persoudy. I'm the Director of Finance for PWSA. An overview of our 2020 operating budget. For fiscal year 2020, PWSA has a total budget of $280 million. Our operations spending and debt service is closely monitored by the finance team. We anticipate having a positive net cash flow while allowing for increased pay-go funding, as well as transferring funding to our reserves as required. Of course, balancing out the expenditures on the revenue side are the collections from our water and our sewer customers, our collection efforts on behalf of Alkasan and other miscellaneous Some of the budget highlights for 2020. The PWSA Board once again approved a balanced budget for 2020. Our financial health, PWSA continues to find efficiencies in our programs and to be proactive. PWSA has worked internally and with the PUC to strengthen our projects and programs with clear metrics and deliverables, and strategically address our legacy of disinvestment. PUC oversight has strengthened our standards and our accountability. This budget not only meets our operational needs, but allows for additional pay-go funding and meets our required debt coverages and ratios.
Thank you, Jen. Next, we'll get into the Capital Improvement Plan of PWSA. Before I get into that, just to introduce myself, my name is Ed Barka, I'm the Treasurer and Deputy Director of Finance for the PWSA. So moving into the capital plan itself, the PWSA plans to invest over $1.2 billion into the system to replace and rehabilitate critical infrastructure. Specifically, this includes the water treatment plant, the Clearwell water main replacements, which does include lead lines, sewer main replacements, or reservoirs, and storm water as it relates to combined sewer overflows. In addition, there will be capital improvements planned to improve physical and cybersecurity, as well as vehicle and major equipment replacements. Together, these improvements will improve water quality, increase system reliability, and continue the progress that has been made to restore the PWSA to a first-class utility. Next, we'll get into the financial stability of the authority and how this keys into achieving our capital plan. PWSA has a financial stability to fund the capital program and plans to take a strategic approach to funding, which will maximize savings to our ratepayers. Proof of this financial stability can be seen in the June of 2019 Moody's Investor Services' credit opinion of the PWSA, which upgraded the outlook of the authority. And the reason that's crucial to us is that's one agency that has been very critical of the PWSA in the past, so for them to improve our outlook was a step forward from a third-party that really verifies the progress that have been made. Within the credit itself, it does mention the improved operations and controls that we have implemented, as well as a strong management team that has contributed to the improved financial position. As previously mentioned, PWSA will take a strategic approach to funding the capital program. This includes aiming to fund at least 10% of capital expenditures with pay-as-you-go measures, and in addition, we will continue to seek governmental funding from various programs. And within the PowerPoint presentation itself, I have highlighted a few programs that we've either received funding from or plan to apply for in the future. The first is the most crucial one that we're working on now, that's funding our lead service line replacement program. That is a award we received from Penn Vest in 2018 with the approximate value of $49 million. A portion of that was a loan and a portion of that was a grant. Following up with that, we have already submitted an application to Penn Vest to continue that program, but on a larger scale and for the next three to four years. And really what, you know, on the high level of those details of that program is funding the small diameter water main replacement program with the approximate funding value of over $200 million over the next three years. And again, that's a lead line and non-lead line replacement program, which replaces critical infrastructure, but also addresses the healthcare, the health needs of lead. Next, the PWSA plans in the December of this year to submit an application to the Department of Community and Economic Development with the state. They have a funding program called H2OPA, which is a grant program that you can apply funding for for various projects. Specifically, we're going to lump the small diameter water main replacement program and apply for it through that program, with the potential of receiving $20 million in a grant. And depending on the funding received from either Penn Vest or the DCED, we will, you know, combine funding sources and/or choose the best value for PWSA customers. And lastly, we'll talk about the WIFIA Program, the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. This is a federal program administered by the EPA, which allows various water utilities and utilities in general to apply for funding for various capital projects. But we have not submitted an application to WIFIA yet, however, in the summer of this coming year of 2020, we plan to identify various projects that are eligible and will apply for funding at that time for that program. And then lastly, I'll show just a debt comparison of PWSA compared to its peer utilities or peer competitors, if you will. As displayed on the chart, this debt comparison lists other peer utilities comparing current debt service levels to the estimated PWSA debt service levels in fiscal year 2024. And the reason that's key is because that's when these five-year capital plan will end. So as you can see there on the right, in 2018, that's the current PWSA debt levels and debt service payments, but then next to that, you have the estimated 2024 debt service levels and debt service payments that accompanies all of the work that will need to be done under the five-year capital improvement plan. When looking at the chart, two main things will stick out. The first is the utility sector is a capital-intensive industry, and the reason this is unique is because it's not like other municipalities or, you know, governmental agencies, but our, you know, our sector is capital-intensive, and that really drives, you know, the quality of service moving forward. So you're going to see some very large numbers here presented in this debt comparison, but that's, you know, that's just how the utility industry functions as a whole. The next point is that the debt levels are going to be, I'm sorry, the next, my second point here, second point I will make is the current and future debt levels of the PWSA is lower now than it will be whenever we complete the capital program. So as you can see there, those seven peer comparison utilities, that shows their current day debt levels, but then if you look over to the right, under the 2024 PWSA estimated debt levels on the far right, that shows you approximately where we think we're going to end up at the completion of the capital program. And really what that shows you is that, looking at our peer competitors or utilities, really not that far off to the mark, and actually, we're doing better than they are right now with their debt service levels. So I think, really, just to wrap all this up, really what this means is that as a whole, we can afford the program that we're putting out there, and in fact, we're doing better than some of our peer utilities are right now. So this is an affordable program, we have many tools in the toolbox that we can leverage, whether that be pay-go or grants, and as a debt capacity level, we meet that checkbox as well, showing that, you know, we're not an outlier in this utility, in this, you know, universe. This is just the nature of the beast, if you will. And then with that, we'll open it up for-
Good, alright. Thank you. We're also joined by Councilwoman Smith. So at least from the chart, we were beating Cleveland, is what I saw, because that's just a whole sewage plant in and of itself, right? So I will pass it off to my colleagues for any questions. Do you want me to start with Theresa?
Yes. So, thank you all for your work, and thank you for being here. I just want to say, I came out visibly angry and visibly upset because of the letter I received from PWSA regarding flooding that's been occurring in Banksville. And it was a project that was designed, as my understanding, by Director Weimer, and has caused flooding repeatedly in Banksville, and the residents have been putting up with flooding for probably about eight years, I'm thinking somewhere around there, seven, eight years. And we continue to throw a little bit of money here, a little bit of effort here, and yet, these residents are, on Hayson Avenue, Red Oak and Hayson, homeowners have been experiencing flooding significantly, to the fact that even where the Attorney General's car was flooded one time in one of the floods. And so, he's also interested. And so, I'll just say, I'll follow up with him after this meeting, if I'm not happy with the answers I get today. So the letter claims that the residents, it's my understanding, that the residents have the responsibility to pay for some of this work. So you just told me that there's clarity that you can add to this that would make, help calm me down a little bit, but it's going to have to be significant because I'm that angry right now.
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman, for the opportunity to clarify. So, first of all, the letter that you're referring to is a letter to you summarizing the preliminary findings of a business case evaluation that we've prepared for remediation strategies in Banksville on the streets of Red Oak and Hayson, where the flooding you're referring to is occurring. That is, first, just to reiterate, a preliminary summary of a report that is, we're expecting to be finished by us very soon, that covers several scenarios for how to address the issue.
But let me just say real quickly, we don't have the report yet, but we are expected to receive a copy of that report.
That's correct. You will receive a copy of the report as soon as it's finished.
So, I'm going by only what I have right now.
That's correct. And we sent you an initial summary just to give you a sense as to what the final report will include, because we're a bit behind schedule on the report, and so we just didn't want to leave you without information. The report is looking at multiple scenarios for how to address the issues that the residents are experiencing, and those different scenarios have, present different complications or situations as it relates to how the improvements can be funded. There, under current circumstances, under PWSA's current regulatory environment and our current authorization through our Articles of Incorporation, our current fee structure, we are able to allocate PWSA resources to pay for projects that abate combined sewer overflows and projects that abate sanitary sewer backups, or what we call SSOs, which is sewage backing up into someone's basement. So we do have resources available to spend on projects that achieve those two objectives, and those both play a role in the solution on Red Oak and Hayson. And to the extent that, you know, the project or work that will eventually be done to remediate this problem is, it relates to CSO abatement or SSO abatement, that would be something that PWSA would pay for in accordance with our regulatory obligations and available resources. It is possible, under some of the scenarios outlined in the report, that there may be some costs, not total costs, but some costs that the residents or homeowners would be responsible for because of legal restrictions on what PWSA is permitted to do on private property. So there may be some modifications to internal privately-owned plumbing that would be necessary to complement work that we would do. And we're, we as an authority are not-
I'm going to stop right there. I'm going to say that is interpreted by your attorneys and by what you understand the laws to be. That is, laws, as you know, that's subjective.
Sure.
And so, we'll make sure that we have another attorney, including the Attorney General's office, look at that.
That's fine. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, if there is another interpretation, you know, that is produced by you, by others-
Especially because this is occurring because of the work PWSA has done.
Yeah. I understand your, I understand your concern, and again, we're not, we're certainly open to discussing those issues. Our analysis, our understanding of our legal rights and what we can and can't do-
By your attorneys.
Are described, by ours and outside attorneys, we've had a look at this, are described there, but we're, you know, that's, we're operating from the best information we have and our understanding of what we can do. But I do just want to be clear that in no scenario there are we saying that the full, you know, obligation for remediation should be borne by the homeowners, and if that was your interpretation of how the letter was originally drafted, then I apologize that it was unclear.
No, any cost to the residents is unacceptable to me, because this is not, this is not their doing. This was doing, this was the work of PWSA that's caused this work, these issues that they're experiencing. So, designed by your director, who's not here, because he's, wherever he lives or wherever he's on vacation, where is he? I don't know where he is, but wherever he happens to be. So, I can't ask him. It was signed by him. So I will make sure that we follow up on this, but I want, you know, this is not over. I'm extremely angry. I'm going to be extremely angry if they have to pay one dime out of their pockets. They've already put enough money out, they've put enough stress out, they've gone through enough, and I couldn't even work for a company that did this to people. I mean, honestly, I know you're all wonderful people, but I couldn't even, I don't care. I mean, at some point, you've got to say, to me, this is disgusting, that you would put people through this kind of aggravation, this kind of stress. I mean, they never know when their homes are going to flood, their kids can't even use their game rooms. The lives that they have lived, the lives that they have lived because of the work PWSA has done to help them has been horrific. And so, let me just tell you, I will be just as horrific to PWSA as they have been to my residents. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Well, I, where is the director today?
Director Weimer's traveling. Director Wymer is traveling for the Thanksgiving holiday. He wasn't able to be here. Sends his apologies.
Because usually, we have a different group of people here.
The three of us, the three of us were the three who presented last year as well.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, they had to be in the audience, though.
The director was here.
Director was here. Yeah.
I don't think he's coming with the same.
Okay. Shouldn't have had it so close to the holidays, right? Okay, I don't know if this is what you were reading off of as you were speaking. You had a couple different chemicals that you talked about.
Yeah, in, in the presentation, the one that you've got your thumb on there.
You can highlight where that's at, because that's where I'm looking for, because I started with this, because you started with that, not realizing that that was behind it, which is probably everything that you.
So both, both documents include the information, but that's, that's what I was referring to, in terms of chemical changes.
The names of the chemicals, are they in here?
The chemical that I was referring to is called orthophosphate.
I, I, that was the first one. I have that one.
Oh, you're asking about, you're asking about, so those are contaminants that we're testing for.
Correct.
Yeah. The one is called, it's a category called PFOS.
Did you put it in here?
That's not in there. I can, I can get you some additional information about that if you'd like.
I really would like that.
Yeah. And just to reiterate, those, PFOS, which is a class of potential water contaminants that have been getting increased interest in the industry and across the country. They're a byproduct of a lot of plastics, you know, firefighting foam used at airports and contains PFOS. They can also enter the drinking water supply from things as simple as older non-stick pans. There's, there's growing knowledge.
Have to have a lot of older non-stick pans. So what's it really coming from?
It can come from industry, it can, I mean, it's a, it's a plastic.
Fracking, anything?
Typically, no. I don't, I'm not aware of it being used in, in that industry. In any event, I just, the reason that I highlighted it was to point out that, under current EPA rules, it's not a regulated contaminant because the, the jury is still out, I suppose, but they're still doing their fact-finding on it. But PWSA is voluntarily testing for it, even though we're not required to do so, and have found no, no measurable levels of it in PWSA's drinking water, which is a good thing.
And it's from a plastic, type of plastic?
It is a byproduct of industrial activities, often including things like plastic coatings and things like that. But we're not finding it in our water, which is a good thing. The other category that I mentioned in that same section was radionuclides. That's, those can sometimes be byproducts of hydraulic fracturing, or, but in general, that's particles that have sort of radioactive properties. Again, we're testing for those voluntarily and not finding measurable quantities, which is a good thing.
Anything else you're looking for in there?
Well, obviously, we're looking for all of the regulated contaminants, things that the DEP, EPA, or other, you know, agencies require us to test for. And again, we're measuring all of those within the acceptable parameters. The only area where, in recent years, we've had an exceedance, obviously, is lead. And as I addressed on the first slide, we have an aggressive plan in place, both on the corrosion control and lead line replacement side of things to manage and eventually eliminate that problem.
You do know that this used to be my choice of drink. I could tell the difference between PWSA water, like, like people can, you know, and American water, like people can Coke and Pepsi with a blindfold on. I have not drank water probably in the last five or six years. Drunk and bottled water, and quite a few people are at this time because really don't know what's happening. And I'm just going to go back to the beginning when they fired a bunch of people or left them go, that really knew what they were doing, including our chemist. And then he brought in a consultant who headed our department of PWSA. Real dummies, put them in charge of PWSA, who brought their friends in. And put that, do you remember the name of the chemical? That ate everything off of the inside of the pipes?
Yeah, it was, it was a change in the corrosion control regimen that you're referring to.
And it was a chemical.
Yes, yes, it was.
Correct. Which ended up pulling everything off the sides, including lead, because it's the first you ever heard, the lead.
Right, yeah, you know, you're correct.
Lead, lead was in the water. We never had those problems before, and it was dumb and stupid to do something like that. And how many millions of dollars has that costed the city, I mean, PWSA and the city?
Yeah. It, you're correct. Our, the lead exceedance followed, at least our understanding of the problem is that it followed elimination of the protective coating inside lead service lines that allowed drinking water to come in contact with the lead pipe. The reason that we're switching to an orthophosphate treatment plan is to rebuild that coating.
Trying to stick it back on the sides where it was.
Correct. We're trying to create a protective barrier inside the pipe to undo that damage.
And, and you brought our chemist back and a few other people to help you out with it, and it's a shame.
There's, there's certainly been significant changes in leadership and management since the period you're talking about where a lot of the decisions, where those decisions were made. Yes, absolutely.
Yes. So, so a lot of that has to do with the money issues too, and the DEP getting involved in PUC and everything else. And I guess, I'm one of the furious people who can't drink the water. I mean, I use it.
I hope we can win you, win you back, because.
You can smell, you can smell, you can smell, you can smell when it's bad. But I had a couple other questions. How many, how many billion or how many million of dollars so far have we spent on the lead? Plus digging up the streets and the pipes and, do you have a total of that?
I could say, since the program kicked off in 2016, I don't have the exact numbers Omni right now, but I could say we spent north of $40 million today. Now, we do have other commitments tied up to spend more money on the program.
Correct.
But to give you an estimate, I would say it's around $40 million to date.
To date. So how much do you think it's going to go out there?
It's tough to say. I know that our, our small diameter water replacement program, which includes lead, it's 50% lead, 50% replacing old pipe, is north of $500 million over the next five years. Now, again, that's not all lead. You could consider half of that lead, so you're in the $250 million range.
Okay, now, you have the replacement of the lines, and, and that has been going on. However, when you're, it says free private lead-lined replacement project. Okay, which you have been doing. Now, is that now including whatever you had to rip up to, to do that? To put those lines in, such as if you had to go through someone's living room and dining room and kitchen?
So our lead line replacement program includes the replacement of the line, obviously, including the private side of the line where it is lead, and the necessary plumbing components of making a replacement. It does not include landscaping or hardscaping, which is decorative, you know, sort of components of a yard or something like that. We do not, we'll backfill any excavation, obviously, and repair the sidewalk, repair the street, put the basement back into functional repair. But if, for example, if you had a finished basement and part of that had to be removed to get access to the connection, that would be the responsibility of the property owner to repair. We do cover that, the division of responsibilities between both parties in great detail with the customer before any work is done. There's an onsite consultation where they're walked through every step of the progress, process, and we make clear what any costs that might inure to them are. And then they are given an opportunity at that point to opt out or proceed in a different fashion. I will say that because we've been able to use a trenchless replacement method in the vast majority of instances, which is a pull-through method where we bring the new pipe into the basement. As we pull the old one out, it pulls the new one in through the same hole. By utilizing that method, we've been able to really minimize any disruptions that customers experience, and in most cases, don't, there are no costs that they have to incur or minimal ones. Most of the work really is in the street, in the sidewalk, or plumbing work in their basement that is covered by us. But in the, in the event that any cost would be incurred by them, that's disclosed to them upfront so that they have an understanding and can plan or work with us on them.
Okay. I'm, I'm hoping that's how it's happening. Then, the question I have is on Highland. We have the two reservoirs up at Highland.
Correct.
The one's covered, the one isn't covered.
That's correct.
Has anybody thought about covering the second one with something that maybe have it still look like the water?
Yeah, we've explored, I'm sorry, let's keep them finished.
Okay, that, you know, it still has the same look, but it's not as deep.
Yeah. We explored a number of scenarios there. The specific one you're describing, I think we determined was not practical from a regulatory standpoint, because if there were any kind of breach between the, the separation between the two layers, which would allow that surface water to get into the drinking water, that could pose a contamination risk, and we wouldn't necessarily know immediately that it was happening if there was water obscuring our view of the cover. So that one is probably not practical. However, we are exploring a number of short and medium-term, you know, scenarios for the, the long-term future of Highland One. Right now, what we've determined to be the most cost-effective strategy and the most, you know, implementable one, is what's described in the, earlier in the presentation, the updates and modifications to the existing microfiltration plant, which is not that old and is in good working order.
Which cost the water customers, how much money?
I, I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head. My point to you is that it's a cost that's already been incurred, so we may as well get our, get our money's worth out of it, so to speak, by making relatively.
And that was down the road. That's, that wasn't just yesterday.
Yeah, that was in the early 2000s, 2000, 2001, somewhere in that timeframe.
Right.
So, we feel that the upgrades we are making to the microfiltration plant are the most cost-effective and best solutions for the short to medium term. Longer term, we might look at scenarios that include eliminating Highland One as a drinking water reservoir entirely and constructing a new facility, a tank, or other alternative place for that drinking water to live, at which point, we could work with the city, the Parks Conservancy, other partners for a future of, for the reservoir that may be of recreational use.
She didn't go there.
Or something of that nature. I, my, my point, I'm sorry, my, my point was merely to suggest that if we didn't, weren't using it as a drinking water infrastructure facility, that we would then turn responsibility back over to the city to do it as it chooses.
I mean, there's a lot of things that could be done. I mean, and I'm sure. Now, my understanding is when the water comes down and through and over to Highland, it's already cleaned.
To the reservoir? Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And right now, that reservoir is not being used for the north side. We're getting our water from Highland?
The north side is primarily in the Lamphur.
Friday Road?
Yes. The, the name of, the name of that reservoir is Lamphur, but yes, I think it's on Friday Road.
I mean, most people know it by Friday Road. Okay, you said you put a new wall and railing.
We, we did not put one up. We are, there is a, what's called a parapet wall around the reservoir now. It's a very low concrete wall. It's got a lot of wear and tear on it. We're completely replacing that parapet wall. Then we are going to reinstall the existing railings. We were taking the railing off, cleaning it, sprucing it up, basically, repairing, replacing the wall around the base, and then we're going to put that railing back up.
That is probably so high.
With the railing, I mean, it's, it comes to a, you know, a standard railing height, I mean, about midway up my chest. I don't know the exact height. If I were standing next to it, it would come to about here. The, the wall would come up maybe to like, you know, just past your ankle and mid calf. That's where the wall comes to.
But then the railing isn't that high either.
It, it, it's a, a standard height for a railing. It's not, you know, you can see over it. It's, it's not, wouldn't obstruct folks' view if they're walking around, that kind of thing.
But the deer can jump in over it, and we've got many carcasses out of there.
So, so the, the addition of security.
Acid car batteries and, and actual deer.
So that's, that's related to one of the items that I mentioned, which is, one, there'll be 24/7 staff presence at the microfiltration plant now, which was not the case before. And two, we've added security cameras that, or will keep a sort of 24/7 view of the reservoir. And those cameras will be monitored, and then there'll be staff physically present. So to the extent that, in the relatively rare instances, an incident like that occurs, we'll be in a position to respond quickly.
I don't think it's as rare as you think.
Well, so, another more common issue that we've had in the past was with ducks entering the reservoir primarily through the cracks or openings in the parapet wall. The full replacement of that will be an effective deterrent for the more common scenario, which is ducks.
But mostly, what I've heard was car batteries and the carcasses from, from the deer.
Car batteries.
Drowning in there. And, and, I mean, they can jump over a wall that high, and I don't know. But we are getting from Friday Road again? We're not getting from Highland?
Most of the north side is in the, as you're calling it, the Friday Road area.
Right.
And continues to be. So, so that reservoir was also shut down for maintenance for a while to replace, to repair the base and replace the cover, or parts of it were, I should say. We just shut down one side and then alternated to the other. That work is, most of it is complete. I'm not sure if it's 100% complete. I could double-check that. But mo-most folks in the north side are getting their water from that portion of the system and not from the Highland One or Two system.
Okay, so, almost everybody is going, when will everybody be getting in over there?
Well.
The ones that did get it before.
The, the, the fundamental sort of distribution system never changed. With Highland One out of service, we've been relying more on Highland Two, which is the lower-covered reservoir in Highland Park. And we've had to install temporary pumps to pump water from there up to some higher elevation areas. But, so, anyone who was getting water from Highland One is now currently, in most cases, getting it from Highland Two. By bringing Highland One back online, we'll add greater redundancy and sort of backups to the system. We'll eliminate the need for those temporary pumps, which is an energy efficiency saving. It'll allow us to rotate out some other core parts of the system in order to do needed maintenance on some of our pump stations. So there is real, there are real advantages to getting Highland One back online, but I, I don't think it'll have a major effect on north side customers because, again, most of them are served by a different reservoir.
Okay. And then you talk about bringing more work in-house, which obviously, when you're not getting private companies doing the work and you have it coming in inside, you do save money. My understanding is that, I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My understanding is that you're having a hard time finding plumbers.
Yes, we are having, we are having, I don't want to say difficult. Yes, we are having, we are having, I don't want to say difficult, we are having, facing recruitment challenges in meeting our growing workforce demands. Plumbers are very much in demand in the region right now.
Right.
And, you know, we are doing everything we can to bring folks in. I think in large part, the issue, one of the issues we're facing is just that we're, you know, we're scaling up the amount of work we need to do very quickly. And as are others, you know, there's a variety of types of development in the region that rely on plumbers. We're doing, and we're involved in a lot of workforce development efforts to improve our ability to bring folks in, but plumbers have been a tough one.
Okay. And we're still, we're going to hear from PWSA or Alkazan.
Yeah, I think they're next.
But I see Alkazan on your map.
Yeah, Jen can speak to that. That just means that the money that's collected and then conveyed to Alkazan.
That's correct. So on our expenditure side, we do have a payment to Alkazan, payments to Alkazan, but that is, again, balanced out on the revenue side by our collection efforts on behalf of Alkazan.
Okay, that's because you collect Alkazan.
That's correct.
Right.
Right, it's listed on our bills.
Yeah, we, that's, I was going to say, that charge is collected on our bill and then conveyed to them.
Okay, I just, just wondered why. So how much more do you think you're going to be raising the water bills? I mean, that's what people keep asking because the water bills keep going up. The less water they use, the more their bill is, so.
So that, that's becoming a more complicated question than it used to be because of PUC oversight. You know, we have to prepare a rate case with, with what we would, you know, like to charge and the types of projects we'd like to spend it on, present it to them, and then that takes as much as, it can take as much as a year-
It's a nine-month process.
Yeah, to, to finalize. So, you know, that's a, a, the subject of a complicated regulatory proceeding. We do anticipate continued rate increases over the next several years as we may take steps, you know, to catch up on a very long backlog of necessary projects and maintenance. I don't, can't tell you sitting here today exactly what we are proposing, but we will be developing those and then going through the PUC process, which is a very public vetting process, as we are prepared to move forward. I will also note that it out of, it is out of sensitivity to the effects of those rate increases that we have been in, working diligently to improve and expand our customer assistance program to make sure that the, that burden is fairly and equitably distributed. And there is a flyer, in addition to being in the presentation, is a flyer in the packets we distributed with information about that program for your constituents.
Okay. And are we still paying American Water what we were paying them before? What, what do they do that they keep one step ahead of us? Can you tell me?
I think there's, there's a variety of reasons why the, the rate difference between the two persisted for so long. Part of that was that PWSA frankly was not raising rates to keep up with the need of the system, and so our system was falling into disrepair while they were raising rates and therefore, you know, that, that gap was widening. We have, through our recent efforts to raise rates in order to make very necessary and important investments in the system, closed that gap significantly. I believe that the current average of the subsidy, the, the payment that we've been making to equalize the rates is only 42 cents, which is much smaller than it used to be. However, you know, it's our understanding that pursuant to PUC requirements, that pay, those payments are going to end effective January 1st.
Oh, that's great. That, that's good news. How come that wasn't on your little script here? That's something, then. I was very positive. I, I like your director. I, I like everyone that I've talked to at PWSA, and everybody has been, you know, has answered my questions, and you've been very honest at the table here. And it's nice to see you all again. So-
Thank you, Councilman.
Have a very nice Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
All right.
I can't have her sounding more normal than me. Wait a minute.
Just so you know, the councilwoman gave up water, it's now vodka.
No.
Why's she sounding so great?
So, Director Vanek has a couple of questions, and we'll wrap this up.
Yes, a couple of questions and comments, requests for information. One is, I'd love to have a copy of your presentation. Well, I'm, I need one electronically to put online for, for the public. As a segue with the rate issue, my understanding over the last 15, 20 years, the ratio between what commercial rates were and residential rates, we also had institutional rates, that that ratio has shrunk where residents end up paying a little bit more based on that ratio than, than commercial, as it was 10 years ago. So it's, obviously, it's different, we're under regulatory from the PUC. If we can get the different types of rates for the members, I think that might be helpful for them. Also, as we move along in the future, obviously, the city is out of its budget, is going to be working on different things that may affect, and along with PWSA, on flooding issues and, and street repairs, they're up on my street right now doing lines. I hope they come and pave afters because we got it all torn up, but I'm sure everything will be good there. So we look forward to working on, on several different fronts on you. The one question I have for Ms. Prashuti is the pension offset. Employees at the PWSA did not receive the pension offset, unbeknownst to many of the folks working in the finance department over the past 15 years. So my understanding was, or I heard a rumor, that new employees are no longer receiving a defined benefit plan. Is that true?
That is correct. We are offering our employees a 401A program.
Okay, and that will be separate and held by the PWSA. So new active employees, we will no longer, which we didn't get state aid until this past year. Unfortunately, we weren't applying for it. We will no longer get that state aid. So then the PWSA would make up the state aid that would then be missing for those employees. So your employer contribution will be higher as a result of that.
Our employer contribution to our employees?
For the, for the current pension that's held by the city of Pittsburgh. Members of our fund.
So we are not admitting new members into, to the pension fund, and so we will pay on behalf of those members that are admitted currently in the fund.
But it, it will reduce the amount of contribution that comes from the state, as well as, as employees begin to leave, the pension fund will then have a higher obligation because it's not receiving those funds that it typically would from employee contributions. So that's something we should work on coming up into the future to make sure that the city pension fund is kept whole, or as whole as possible.
Two, two things on that. So just to clarify, all new non-union employees are not included in the pension as per the union contracts. We still have to, you know, provide that benefit. Just clarification there. And then, as far as the state pension aid, I have to double-check. I don't believe PWSA employees are factored in, in that calculation.
Well, we were previously, this past year, we made requests.
Okay, you're saying before you did, okay.
That's right, and for many years it wasn't, and it was a loss of approximately $1.1 million over the past few year, each year over the past few years. So, yeah, we want to make sure that the municipal pension fund is as solid as possible as we move on in the future, so.
We, we work, you know, obviously close with the city and the pension actuary to figure those calculations out. So, I mean, that will come up with our discussions, you know, with them as part of our reimbursement to the city for, you know, our portion of the pension, so.
Correct.
Those discussions will happen.
And I'm happy to.
And just one other request. Can I get a copy of your debt service bond policy?
Oh, yeah, sure.
For PWSA. I'm, I'm assuming it's similar to the city, but I know that one of your board members is really into intergenerational borrowing, so I, which I'm not a super fan of, but a little nerdy, sorry.
All right, so. Go for it.
I just forgot what it was, though. Go ahead, Cora, I'll think of it.
Oh, no.
I just wanted to ask, yeah, I just wanted to ask, you had, I heard $70,000 allocated for floods, flooding is, could you-
No, that was, that was, I believe, that's what's in the, that's what's in the city budget relative to flooding, is that correct? Yeah, Bill, that was Bill Reid, what's in the city budget.
But you have more.
Well, so, as I was mentioning in my answer to you earlier, under our existing revenue structure and rate structure and tariffs, we are, we are able to spend money on CSO abatement and SSO abatement. We are also in the process of developing a future stormwater tariff filing that would collect revenue for stormwater differently, that would allow us to take on more projects that are strictly related to flooding. That is not currently in place and we're not, we're not anticipating it being in place in the next year. So, there will be more to come on that, but as it stands now, we do have a significant budget for stormwater projects that are involved, that address combined sewer overflows and basement backups, yes.
Okay. Well, we're going to continue our conversation, so.
Absolutely.
I'm just going to let it go with that one. But, but I think it's better if we have that conversation that the director's at the table, you know, with us at the table.
Sure, understood.
But you did a great job, thank you. I mean, he definitely took all, a lot of talent from the Pittsburgh areas, from the city of Pittsburgh. But thank you all for being here.
Sure.
All right, well, thank you.
But do know, if this is not handled with, thanks, Phil, I'm going to be crazier than I was today.
Completely understood, Councilwoman. And we're, we're committed to coming to a resolution that you and the residents and everyone can be happy with. This is just a step in the process, is completing this analysis and then talking through the, what's, what the parameters of possible solutions are. So we're, we're going to continue discussing that with you as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This year, you're going to start charging the city, is that correct?
Yeah, starting in 2020, there will be charges to the city for water pursuant to the, the new cooperation agreement. That's correct.
And that is a phased-in approach with 20% in year one graduating to 100% in 2024.
Okay, so if there's water that has come from other areas, such as streams, then the city could be using those streams that are still running under, underground to maybe fill some of the things in the area that need water.
You, you mean like for watering plants or things, things like that and?
No, no, maybe for little lakes or-
Oh, yeah, sure. I mean, for, for recreational amenities or things like that, that's, that's really up to the city, how you want to do things like that, fountains, things like that. What we're, what we will be charging for you is treated potable water that, you know, runs through our system and through a water meter, you know, so that, that may include, you know, obviously, water that's servicing buildings, you know, bathrooms, kitchens, things like that. And if you are using that water supply for things like fountains or other things, you know, other recreational components, then those would be metered and charged in that phase in. If the city wants to employ conservation methods, rain barrels-
Then they could save money and utilize some of those streams and that, that have been stopped and bring the water in from PWSA.
That's up to you guys, yeah.
Okay, and you don't know what those charges, how that's going to work for 220 yet? What's it being budgeted?
Yeah, so your director has the budgeted amount that is anticipated as water and sewer conveyance payment to PWSA as well as their portion of Alkazan.
Yeah, every $1 million I had in there, it's up from $400-some thousand, so we got about 2.7 million additional in water charges that we have anticipated. Of course, we're in the process of being able to meter buildings and all that, so there's, they're making some generic estimates. That's one of the other issues we should-
Does that mean the city charges for permits and all kind of?
Absolutely, yes, that is included in the cooperation agreement and budgeted on PWSA's side.
You know what, if it's about the same, that would be so much work. You'd have to put more people on.
Well, we are working with Director Paulus at, in the Office of Management and Budget to ensure that the payments and the services between the two organizations are documented and appropriately paid for on whatever frequency both organizations decide works for both.
And are you using the Troy Hill reservoir also?
The Troy Hill reservoir? I'm, I'm not sure which one you're referring to there.
In Troy Hill?
Oh, we'll have to get back to you on it. We'll look at our distribution. It might be called something.
Yeah, we might, we might just have a different name for it in our system, so we'll double-check.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Yeah, lead lines have been going well in my neighborhood, just want to thank you for that. And the one thing the council has to be aware of in the new agreement, we have to take over a lot of responsibilities. So, the administration, we need to put funding aside to maintain a lot of our pipes and parks and things that you guys used to do, and now we have to take that responsibility. So thank you very much. All right, we'll bring up Alkazan now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you.
Mike Jake survived.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too, thank you. It's good seeing you.
Yeah, all right. Director's going to talk a little bit about Alkazan while they set this up.
Okay. Alkazan, the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority is located along the Ohio River on Pittsburgh's north side. The Allegheny County Sanitary Authority provides water waste, wastewater treatment services to 83 communities, including the city of Pittsburgh, the host community. Alkazan's 59-acre treatment plant is one of the largest wastewater treatment facilities in the Ohio River Valley, processing up to 250 million gallons of wastewater daily. Alkazan was created in 1946 under the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act to begin trading water, wastewater in 1959. The authority is governed by a seven-member board of directors, three appointed by the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, three appointed by Allegheny County Chief Executive, and there is one joint appointment. Councilman Corey O'Connor is city council's representative on the Alkazan Board. For 2020, Alkazan does touch the city's operating capital budgets in a few locations, including a number of grants, such as the component, such as one of the components for the I-579 cap project, $408,900, and a grant for the first T-Bab O'Connor Clubhouse Project in Shenley Park.
Imagine that.
That amount is $411,900. As noted in the PWSA notes above, there is a sewer line item in the operating budget at a cost of $42,419.
Thank you. As the, as the representative, I have to say that, you know, Alkazan does a very good job. Oh, I know you were a prior representative.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, I have to go, no, no, I have to go back. Can I just say something real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't even need to interrupt you.
No, you're good.
I didn't realize you were going to open a statement.
No, that's okay.
I just want to thank Alkazan for their work in Sheridan Park because without Alkazan, this project would never have happened. But they put in a $6 million project, working with Congressman Doyle and Alkazan and Army Corps of Engineers and others on a project in our area that hasn't seen investment in a very long time. They certainly haven't, certainly haven't seen infrastructure investment in decades. And so I want to thank you very much, and you managed to do it without raising taxes for the park, so thank you very much for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman was on the board as well at Alkazan and knows a lot about what's going on there. I just want to thank the staff, I mean, they do an amazing job. And we're starting to branch out and do more green projects, I think, all across the region. And I think, you know, more people are starting to learn about Alkazan and the great work that you all do, but now the outreach into the community, especially now that the consent decree is signed, how we're going to move forward in this region over the next couple decades about how we're going to separate storm and wastewater. So I will pass it off to, who am I passing it off to? Oh, Mr. Jackson, all yours, yeah.
Councilman, thank you very much. So my name is Douglas Jackson. I am the Deputy Executive Director and Director of Operations and Maintenance. We are pleased to be here to present the Alkazan 2020 Capital and Operating Budget. Before we get to that point, I would like those at the table to briefly introduce themselves.
I am Bill Winks. I'm the Director of Finance and Administration. I've been with the authority for 30-plus years as an employee and with, previously with their CPA firm. And I'm on my final year swan song, and I'm about to let Karen introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Karen Fantoni. I'm the manager of accounting. I've been with the authority as an employee for almost six years. Before that, I served as their public accountant for 15 years. So I have over 20 years of experience with the authority and work directly with Bill.
And I'm Kim Kennedy. I'm the Director of Engineering and Construction.
So with that, I will turn it over to Karen.
For how many years?
So with that, I will turn it over to Karen to present you the Alkazan 2020 budget.
Thanks, Doug.
Do we have a copy?
Nope, I can get you.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us here to talk about the budget. I just want to talk just real briefly about what the process entails for the budget. It's basically a five-month-long process. We start this process in August, and we'll wrap it up next month in December when the board votes to approve the budget. It's a four-year resolution that we're operating under right now. So we had in 19, or 2018, we had a 7.5% increase, 7% in 19, 7% in this current budget for 2020, and then an additional 7% in 2021. There's a variety of reviews, both internal, and now our board actually has the draft budget for their review. And we will ask for board approval, and then it will get posted to our website and sent to our trustee as required by our trust and denture. Some of the highlights that you'll see in the 2020 budget is, again, it has the 7% rate increase. It also provides for additional funding for our municipal green program, which is how Councilman O'Connor had mentioned, the grow program, the green projects that we do. This is providing for an additional almost $9 million into the funding stream that we use to fund those projects. It increases our clean water assistance payment. That's the payment that we use to help some of our less fortunate members of our community. We originally started that process several years ago. It was $30 a quarter. Now that, we took it up to $32 a quarter for 2019, and now we're taking it up to an additional $2 to $34 a quarter, or $136 a year for the 2020 budget. This budget also improves our coverage ratios and our liquidity, and also meets all of the requirements of our trust and denture. What's included in the 2020 budget from a cash requirement perspective? We have an operating budget of $101.6 million. We have debt service payments of not quite $60 million. That's consistent with where we are as far as debt service for 2019. And then our capital spending program is really going to start to ramp up, and we're looking at about $113 million and change for capital spending in 2020. And then again, we're going to transfer an additional almost $9 million over to the funding that we use for our green infrastructure, our green program. So we have a total all-in cash requirements of about $282, almost $283 million, and that's a combination of operating and capital. Where our revenue comes from? 98% of our revenues come from our user fees. So that's all the ratepayers' funding that's coming into Alkasan. We receive very little interest income and hardly any other additional funding. It's pretty anemic. So again, 98% of our revenue is coming from our users. What we're looking at from an expenditure side, when it's broken out by type of expenditure, by area, our interceptor systems, which is the work that we do for regionalization and the work that we do outside of the plant is about $14 million. Plant operations is $25 million. Our environmental compliance, about five. Customer service and billing department is about $3.5 million. Our MIS, our IT people are about $3 million. Plant maintenance, again, $10.3 million. We have our administration and engineering costs of about $14.7. Professional services, less than a million, and then our employee benefits of less than 25. So we have all-in costs in the operating side of about $101.6 million. We talked about capital spending being ramped up this year. We're looking at about $113 million. We have a number of large capital projects that are being kicked off and bid this year in 2020, and that construction cost will start to be increased in 2020 and will continue for quite some time as the clean water program is implemented. So again, significant capital dollars will be spent in 2020. What this means for our user rates? We're looking for an annual impact for the increase of the 7% rate increase of about $31.56 per average user or $2.63 per month. So that is what we're looking on an average basis for our ratepayers to, to be able to afford. Bond readings, the last two slides in the presentation basically are carryforwards from last year. There was the last time that we actually had a review done by Moody's and S&amp;P. What this information in here conveys is what they, what they think of the authority, and they think that we're strong. We're a strong financial position, which is one of the reasons why when we go to the bond market, we, our bonds sell very quickly, and they sell at reduced interest rates. So that saves us debt service costs, and it saves us money for our ratepayers. And that concludes our presentation.
Perfect.
And we'll open it up for questions.
Councilwoman, do you have any questions?
Sure, yes, I'll first.
I already got this presentation, I'm good.
Okay, you're.
I'm on the board.
That's right, you're on this board.
Yeah.
The, a lot of the pipes in the city are getting old, and we're losing a lot. And I think the city's been doing a lot of, a lot of work, and they says, well, we'll either PWSA or Alkasan, you know, pay for these, mostly in the sewers. And now we have, what we didn't have years ago is we keep adding on municipality after municipality, and they're coming in through old pipes, and that's a lot of crap coming in here, as to say. They told me another word is one of your big words down there, but I guess I can't say that on television. So what is happening with the pipes within the city? Are all the municipalities paying the same for these, or how is that working?
Yep. So from the perspective of infrastructure, it's obviously not just a city issue, it's a regional issue.
Right.
The ownership of a lot of those components of infrastructure is very fractured. Alkasan owns 90 miles of what's out there, and there's 4,000 miles of underground sewer infrastructure that are owned by many others. So specifically from the, from the city's perspective, the city likely has their own ordinances and has their own regulatory requirements as required by the state to ensure that the underground infrastructure is in sound condition. There's an aspect of our clean water plan going forward. The term is regionalization, and that's a component of where we would make best-faith efforts to take over multi-municipal sewers. That would be a sewer that would be owned and maintained by several municipalities that's larger than 10 inches in diameter, and it takes away some of that unknown responsibility of who owns what, who's responsible for maintaining it. And we believe that there's over 200 miles of that multi-municipal piping that's out there. That's a key component of our clean water plan, and it's plans that we have in place to take over ownership of those if municipalities are in agreement to transfer that infrastructure to us. So some of that infrastructure, it's only 200 miles, but that addresses the larger lines, specifically that would have the greatest impact on our clean water plans going forward and allow us to plan to develop a strategy that's best to reduce overflows within the region.
Because as I said before, so much of this land used to be God's country, and I mean, there were, you wouldn't see a house from one mile to the next mile, and there was north hills, and there was, you know, each and every municipality that has built up with homes, and they're not just cornfields anymore. So that's a lot, because they really don't want to put in their own system, and I guess you wouldn't like that anyhow if they do. I just want to make sure that, you know, the city's treated fairly with this, because, you know, coming in, we never had problems on Washington Boulevard. Now we have all the flooding, you know, and there's more people coming into all the different pipes that the city has. So I just was wondering, you know, what you were planning for that? And you're talking about another increase with Alkasan?
Yes. The, under the rate structure and our long-term plan to pay for work that's under the federal mandate, the authority right now will, is entering into its third of a fourth-year rate increase program approved by the board. So there'll be a 7% rate increase for 2020, followed on by an additional 7% that has been approved by the board for 2021. At that point, actually, prior to that point, we will evaluate where we are on the, on the program and then look forward to what we need to continue on through 2036, when the program will be winding down.
One, one point I'd like to note with that 7% increase is that in 2012, when we submitted our original wet weather plan, it was anticipated at this point in time that we would be seeing double-digit rate increases. And with our recently renegotiated consent decree modification, our clean water plan, we've been able to manage those, what were thought to be double-digit rate increases to single-digit rate increases. So the original plan completion by 2020, 30, by 2026 was extended to 2036, and that allowed the rates to be a little bit more affordable for the ratepayers.
Okay, and you're operations and maintenance, right? No?
I am. I'm the Director of Operations and Maintenance.
Doug has also recently been named the Deputy Executive Director for Alkasan.
Okay. And where is the executive director?
So the executive director had a family issue that she had to tend to this afternoon.
Okay. Okay, I don't think I have, oh, do you have the plan together on, you know, that plan you've been working on for three or four years? And one of the areas that you were looking at is to make one of your stops was Washington's Landing, and I was hoping we got away from that. Do you, do you know anything about the plan?
No, that's still in development. It's still definitely in planning stages. So what we're focusing on first is the plant expansion. Those are some of the bigger projects on the CIP that you'll see next year. And then moving outside of the fence will be after, after we get a couple of years under our belt of plant expansion.
Okay. Okay, and I mean, there hasn't been too many of those within the city where city residents really, yeah, felt like that they were there, you know, that they had a say on anything. So hopefully, any, if there's any more, and I'm hoping that, that there isn't one of those where you clean it out, I don't know what you call it. Is it something you clean out on the way down? Okay. Because there's other municipalities that that could happen in other than on Washington's Landing. Wanted to make sure I put that forward. Okay. Have a nice Thanksgiving. I've not had a problem talking to anyone from Alkasan. I've always had any needs I had taken care of. And I did have a difficulty, which right away, evidently somebody was watching council, and a genie ran up and brought someone else to talk to me about it. Still not thrilled, but I think we hopefully can resolve that. Thank you.
All right, with that, there will be no council, or council offices will be closed Thursday and Friday. We will reconvene the budget hearings next week, beginning Monday, December 2nd at 10:00 a.m. with the Innovation and Performance chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger, and I will be chairing the URA meeting at 11:30, followed by the mayor's office at 1:30. So thank you for being here, and we will reconvene these budget meetings next week.